Good morning and welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Monday, August the twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, and it is ten AM. All members of court are present and the meeting will come to order. Item number two is invocation by Pastor Jeff Blizzard with First Assembly of God Church in Saratoga. Pastor Blizzard?
Can I first say just a word before I pray?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say what an honor and a privilege to be able to come into this court and to, to seek the Lord for His presence and His anointing on the court. I appreciate it so very much.
Thank you.
Our gracious Father, we enter Your presence, dear Lord, in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and our Savior, Father. Father, Your word declares to seek ye first the kingdom of God and its righteousness, and all these things shall be added unto us. We're seeking you, Father, for Your presence, for Your anointing, for Your grace, for your hand to be extended, Father. Father, I thank you for this court, for the commissioners, for our judge this morning, each one that is gathered in this room, Father. I pray a special blessing and a special anointing upon us, dear Lord, this day. Father, as we make decisions, dear Lord, as we seek Your, Your guidance over this county and the business of this county, Lord, I pray, Father, that there would be an anointing, gracious God. Father, that there would be a grace, dear Lord, and a wisdom dropped into this room, Father, this morning. Father, upon this county, dear Lord, let us seek you and honor you, holy God. I pray, Father, for our servicemen that are serving here and abroad. I pray for the hand of protection, dear Lord, a hand of guidance, dear God, and, Father, that you lead them into all safety, dear Lord. Father, we commit this day in this court into your hands, and we seek you, Father, for your grace, your mercy, and your love. We give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Yes, sir.
Kenny Davenport, will you please lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Item number four, Glenda Austin, County Clerk, approval of minutes of prior meetings.
That would be a regular meeting on August the tenth and a special meeting on August seventeenth.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number five, Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, presentation and approval of registered claims to be canceled by court. And I believe we have Donnie Parker standing in this morning for Debbie. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of six hundred and one thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents and to cancel the vouchers related to this money. This was the total of the county's bills that were presented at the last Commissioners' Court meeting held on August tenth, two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number six will also be Donnie Parker, presentation and approval of cash statement.
Cash report summary in the general checking account, we have eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and ten cents. Investment account at Wells Fargo, four million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. Techpool general account, three hundred thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-one cents for...
Three million?
Oh, it is. Three million, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-one cents for a total of eight million, nineteen thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-two cents.
I move we receive the cash statement.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Donnie. Item number seven, Angela Gore, County Auditor, payment of county bills.
The pre-approved expenditures and transfers for August eleventh through the thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, were a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eighty-six dollars and ten cents. The pre-approved expenditures for August the eighteenth through the twentieth of two thousand fifteen were four hundred, forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. And today, August the twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, the expenditures for Commissioners' Court are two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seventy-five dollars and thirteen cents. The total expenditures and transfers are four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. Gross payroll for August the twentieth, two thousand fifteen, was four hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. FICA was thirty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Retirement is fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-four cents. The total transfer for August the twentieth, two thousand fifteen payroll was five hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Angela.
You're welcome.
Item number eight is Holly Peterson with the Gift of Life Marketing. Adoption of resolution number twenty-four dash fifteen, recognizing August twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen as Julie Rogers' Gift of Life Day, the month of September as ovarian cancer awareness month, and the month of October as breast cancer awareness month. Holly? Good morning.
Good morning. Actually, my name is Christina Morris, and I'm a registered nurse and the Gift of Life program services manager.
Good morning.
Holly is our marketing department, so we thank her for bringing us here in front of you today and thank y'all for allowing us to come and speak to you. We appreciate it. Just to kind of tell you, the Gift of Life program is helping men and women in our communities fight breast cancer, prostate cancer, ovarian cancer. Our big kickoff is in October, which I know a lot of you are familiar with, ovarian cancer and awareness and breast cancer awareness with the color run that we'll be doing in downtown Beaumont. Over time, the program has changed. It began with Ms. Regina Rogers donating five hundred dollars for women to have mammogram breast cancer screenings because they didn't have insurance and couldn't afford to have a mammogram, and she saw these women being treated for cancer that was much more advanced than what she saw her mother being treated. And that's when she learned about the health disparities. Then years later, her uncle came down with prostate cancer in two thousand, so that's when the initiative started to screen men for prostate cancer. We do have that big initiative we do once a year in the month of June, and we try to get all the men to come out. And we do it in the three different larger cities, Orange, Beaumont, and Port Arthur. And we do also wellness screenings too, and that's morphed into something larger. What the color run does signify, though, is our marketing efforts to get the word out about cancer. The Gift of Life program is all about prevention, and there are women now that claim that the Gift of Life saved their lives just by this marketing initiative. People coming out and bringing awareness to the symptoms of breast cancer is one thing, but ovarian cancer is a silent killer of women. And women, by the time they typically find out they have ovarian cancer, it's usually stage three or four, and they pass away within a few months after being diagnosed. But due to the initiative and getting the word out about this cancer and this silent, silent disease that women are dying from, ovarian cancer has come into light, and women are actually acknowledging that the posters and the information they saw at these color runs is what made them go and check their symptoms and to continue with their physicians working with them saying, no, something's just not right. Something's not right, and these women are getting diagnosed and treated earlier. And our initiatives with you bringing it to your towns, your communities, and letting people know that we're there and we're there to assist them and help them in any needs they have, helps us. Because when you get the word out to your community, they support our program, which all the money stays locally. It's not like other programs where it goes out to national research. It's actually taking care of the people in our community in southeast Texas. So we appreciate everything you do. We appreciate you giving us these proclamations. When the information goes into the newspapers, our phones start ringing. Women call us, men call us and say, how can we help? They want to help us get the word out. And then also those who think they need help because there are other problems going on in their lives, possibly due to cancer, they call us and we can route them to the appropriate responses and the appropriate people to be able to help them. And so this is our twentieth year, so we plan on having a huge gala this year. Liza Minnelli, if y'all haven't seen it, she will be coming to Beaumont and be performing on October twenty-ninth. And so that is another initiative to raise money, to continue doing the work we do in our community. So we ask you to put your teams together. October third is going to be the color run. It's thirty dollars to register, and that includes like your T-shirts and your fees. And of course, if you know any breast cancer, ovarian cancer survivors, tell them to call the Gift of Life because their registration is free. And they're kind of like our special guests when they come out to these programs. But the month of October is going to be full of things. There will be things at the Art Museum in Beaumont, survivors who are part of our Pink Power Network, and that is the support group in southeast Texas for women who have breast cancer. They actually make bras to bring awareness to breast cancer. Well, those get touted all over the community in October to make people aware of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And those will be on display at the Art Museum. They're the month of October, so come out and support the survivors in our community. And then again, I said like October third, the color run, October seventeenth will be the National Momography Day. It brings awareness to breast cancer. There will be a luncheon for survivors there at the Art Museum, showing off the bras and things that they've made. And then, of course, on October twenty-ninth will be our big gala, our big twenty-year celebration that we've been in existence here in southeast Texas, and that'll be the concert with Ms. Liza Minnelli. So please come out and support us, and again, thank you for having us here, and thank you for bringing awareness to our community to help us save lives in southeast Texas.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. We're always happy to support the Gift of Life.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
I move we adopt resolution twenty-four dash one five.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Who is Liza Minnelli?
She's a little famous, just a little.
Is she a singer?
Yeah, she's a singer.
We will, uh, we'll have that original ready for you here in just a few minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, authorization for County Judge to sign memorandum of understanding renewing contract with Endogen Healthcare Solutions for data processing. This is the software program for the Endogen Healthcare Department, and we have a copy of that in our packets.
Yeah.
Linda, I think you said the only change is just the dates, just going to the next year.
That's it.
There's no increase or decrease in the funds.
No increase.
I move we authorize County Judge to sign a memorandum of understanding.
A second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Linda.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Item number ten, Chief Deputy Kenny Davenport with the Sheriff's Office. Authorization to submit invoice for payment in the amount of four thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seven cents to Kent's Collision Center for repairs to SO Patrol Unit Number Sixty-three Eighty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do you have something more to say?
Just to let y'all know, the insurance paid four thousand and eighty-nine. We're only having to pay five hundred, Kent's Collision Health Service. We already received the check back for four thousand and eighty-nine for insurance.
So the difference that the county's paying is just a five-hundred something?
Excellent. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Item number eleven, Amanda Young, Assistant Floodplane Administrator. Authorization to submit invoice for payment in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars to Skinner Engineering Services for survey, plat, and field notes on leased area at Hawthorne Field Airport.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Amanda, I did not, I failed to look at the contract. Uh, was there anything in the contract that said we would share this cost with the leasee? Or is the county responsible for the whole amount?
There's nothing in the contract that says it.
And I might be reading it wrong. This is the contract for the new hangars or...
No, sir. This is for the FBO lease. Um, the, on the FBO lease that is, that we have now, it had the, an incorrect description on what he actually was over, so we had to get it redone.
We're working on renewing that lease. I think, does it come up next month?
Yes.
Or in October?
October.
We're working on renewing that lease, and we need to have that description corrected. It was incorrect probably for several years. So we want to get that fixed. And then we will probably come back and do some more surveying out there where we have, uh, the, uh, lease that we've already approved earlier this year. Then we have some others interested in leasing space out there for hangars. So we'll probably go ahead and, and do some more surveying out there and get all that laid out so that when they get ready to lease, they lease certain lot numbers, and it's, it's ready and a lot easier to manage. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Amanda. Item number twelve, Commissioner Pelt, Precinct Three. Permission to solicit bids for two, two-inch asphalt overlay on the following roads. Commercial Drive, two tenths of a mile. Pinewood Boulevard, one tenth of a mile. Piney Point, three tenths of a mile. Woodcrest, two tenths of a mile. Country Wood Circle East, a tenth of a mile. Country Wood Circle North, a tenth of a mile. Blanchard Drive, a quarter mile. And Beklica North, a quarter mile for a total overlay of one point five miles.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen, Angela Gore, discussion and action regarding the following general fund budget amendment request. The amount is eleven thousand and sixteen dollars. Revenue account is zero one zero dash three six seven dash one oh one donations, and the expenditure account is zero one zero dash five six zero dash three five five. Equipment and supplies from donated funds, and that's in the Sheriff's Office.
Yes, sir. Um, this was a, um, local business that donated, um, eleven thousand, sixteen dollars for equipment and supplies for training purposes. And at this time, we request that there's a revenue line item created and expenditures to offset that. So it's increasing our revenue and increasing our expenditures by the same amount.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen, Misty Whitney, purchasing agent. Permission to sell surplus office furniture, equipment, supplies, and other miscellaneous items.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Before we start out in fifteen, does anybody need a break? All right, we'll move on to item number fifteen, Budget Workshop. Angela provided us with some information this morning. I think, uh, this is, most of it's the same information we got last Monday.
That is correct. It is exactly the same information. I just made another copy just in case if someone forgot to bring theirs. And then I did a recap. That first page is just kind of a recap, um... And would you like me to read, um, the recap or read both sheets or how do you want it presented? I can do it this way, um...
Whatever's easiest.
Yeah, right. Okay. Um... In our Road and Bridge Fund, our auto-report, the beginning contingency fund was one million, three hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And then we reduced that contingency, um, and transferred it to our Road and Bridge, um, precinct one through four by one million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and two dollars. So that left funds available to transfer to the general fund contingency of a hundred and seventy thousand, seven eighty-three. And our general fund, our estimated ending contingency for fourteen, fifteen was three million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. If we, um, approve to transfer those funds that are available for, available from the Road and Bridge Fund contingency, that would be a hundred and seventy thousand, seven eighty-three. So that would be a total of three million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. And then our proposed budget, the way that it's presented as filed, we needed two hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars to balance that budget. And so that would leave a estimating, um, beginning contingency of two thousand, fifteen, sixteen at three million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four twenty-five. Now, changes to be made to the proposed budget we filed on July the thirty-first. There was a duplicated, um, deputy position in the sheriff's budget, and we also adjusted the budget to reflect the savings from a new deputy hired at a lower salary than what was budgeted. So that savings is sixty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars, and that includes benefits. That we adjusted, um, some employee step increases, and that was a savings of two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. We reclassified some employees from a light equipment operator to a heavy equipment operator, so that was four thousand, six hundred and ninety-three. Um... We did a salary adjustment to an operator. It's twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. We transferred, uh, and this was from Road and Bridge Three, Commissioner Pelt. This is, um, the seventeen thousand that, um, he originally took out of his salaries, and he was going to give thirteen thousand, two eighty-nine to Commissioner Kirkendall for equipment note. So what we're doing is adding back the, the operator and his benefits, and then we're going to take the thirteen thousand, two eighty-nine to give to Commissioner Kirkendall. We're going to take that from, um, Commissioner Pelt's materials and supplies. We increased our county match for our ATPA officer at six thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. We increased our county match for the county judge supplement, the state supplement, three thousand, thirty-nine dollars. So the changes to be made to the proposed budget is a savings of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. So to recap, we, um, the contingency used to balance this fifteen, sixteen budget was two hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars. The changes made to the proposed budget was a savings of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. The funds available to transfer from Road and Bridge contingency is a hundred and seventy thousand, seven eighty-three. So the savings from the changes made to the proposed budget is seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. So estimated one point five percent raises was a hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, but the savings from our changes to make to our proposed budget was seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. So if we gave a one point five percent raise, the contingency used to balance the, the budget would be a hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two. If we gave a two percent raise, it would cost an estimate of two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five, and the savings that's made from the proposed budget is seven thousand, two ninety-seven. So the contingency to use to balance the budget with a two percent raise would be two hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Thank you, Angela. Does anybody have any questions before we go further into the information that was provided here? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Angela. I do, uh, Judge.
Okay.
Is Daniel here? Daniel, I just want you to, to make sure you understand. Last time we met, we was at a negative two oh eight, three forty-one. Am I correct in saying that we're at a positive seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven now or not?
Well, what you're, you're doing is...
If we agree to make the, uh, move the money from, from the Road and Bridge to the contingency fund in general, then yes.
Yes, that's correct. You have to...
And I'm for doing that.
Yeah. And not only that, I mean, the, the commissioners and the sheriffs really stepped up to the plate.
Yeah.
Again, so, and I appreciate you, Sheriff.
I really wanted to come in here and tell y'all I was cutting a position out, but Angela caught it.
Judge, I would move that we move the hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three from the Road and Bridge contingency to the general fund contingency, and they make the changes to the proposed budget that will give a positive of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, and that we do a two percent salary raise and which will use the...
This will be, this will be the correct, uh, surplus or get us our budget back up to in the positive seventy-two ninety-seven, not the forty-four.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then we do a two percent salary raise with an estimated two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
And then, uh, if you could just add that that would mean we would use two hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars from the, uh, contingency fund.
And that'll leave the contingency fund at three million plus. Right, Angela?
Yeah, three, three-two-three-eight is what I'm thinking. Is that correct?
Okay.
Since this is a workshop, can we take action like that or just have a consensus, uh, what we're gonna do?
Consensus, I guess.
So that, that's Mr. Pelt's.
Recommendation.
Recommendation on the, uh, budget.
I concur.
I do, too.
I concur also. I would say that the last time that we actually had discussion on, say, a raise regarding what percentage. I opposed the raise, and that was because of the, uh, the amount we was in the hole by two hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and forty-one. Looking at these numbers, uh, I could support a two percent raise, uh, but only because of that. So I would, just for the record, I'd like to make it known that it's not that this court is, or any particular commissioner is wishy-washy, but because of these newfound numbers, I could support a two percent raise.
And I do think that's important, just to, to reiterate that we made up and we really balanced the budget. And then, uh, and, and that was the biggest concern, that we wanted to zero it out before we looked at raises, and we did. Disregard what he's saying back there, Daniel.
I coach you back here.
Thank you.
I just told him because I gave that spot back that I get to.
I think that, uh, all of the, uh, department heads and elected officials, I want to thank all the department heads and elected officials who've worked with us through the, uh, budget process. Uh, you have a brand-new court up here. Uh, two of us are brand spanking new members, and, and, uh, and two of us are, uh, not brand spanking new, but fairly new, and then we have one seasoned member of the court.
Seasoned.
I was putting it nicely.
Yeah, veteran. I appreciate it.
Veteran member.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
And, uh, I appreciate Mr. Pelt's guidance through this process as well. Uh, some people like Judge Brewer had some input that was very, uh, beneficial, I think, for us to look at, and we did. And, uh, again, I just want to thank everybody for working with us. Uh, I, I just want to add, I didn't say how I felt about the, uh, raises, uh, now that we're in the positive for just a few minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I am okay. I had said previously that I would be against going into the contingency fund to give raises, and I still feel that way, but I will not vote against the budget. Uh, the consensus on the court here today is that we give the two percent raise. Uh, again, I feel like every employee here deserves a raise, and, uh, I will not vote against the budget because everybody, or at least four members of the court, uh, feel strongly about giving that, and, and I, I feel the same way. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add or subtract?
I have, uh, also discovered through the, uh, budget process, uh, working with other departments, that there is ways that, uh, Road and Bridge and, and all department heads really could help other departments, but this is just throwing it out there. I've discovered also, I guess it was, uh, lack of concern maybe on my part, I don't know. But if we get our, uh, we have a deadline on getting vouchers in, if we can get our vouchers into the treasurer, once we get them instead of holding them, it makes it a lot easier on, uh, both the treasurer and the auditor's office. I, I found that out, so that's just a little tidbit of information to all the department heads. I was under the impression, hold them and get them in at the deadline, but they say it, it makes a big difference if we get them in whenever we get them, so that's just...
Angela, uh, Deborah McWilliams and Misty have asked me to put out a memo regarding, uh, purchasing procedures, and I should have that out later today, and I'll send that out to every department head. So we'll, we'll get that out today, and it goes along those lines of everybody turning your invoices in as they come in. Uh, also talks about the new software program that we have, and we're still working on implementing that. Just give some people information on where we stand on everything. Uh, we'll also have a deadline for submitting our, uh, any, uh, special expenses is what I would refer to them as. Anything that's not regular utilities and what have you, and that'll be September the eighteenth at noon, uh, will be the deadline to, to submit anything for, uh, for this budget year. Is there any questions regarding that, and I'll include that in that memo as well.
At what point, Judge, were we planning on, uh, filing or, or submitting a, uh, a budget?
What we'll do is I'll ask Angela to go ahead and put the budget together, the final budget together, based on the recommendations, uh, made today, and hope to have that on the, uh, first meeting in September to go ahead and, uh, have a, uh, an initial vote on that, and then we'll have a public hearing before the last meeting in September. Uh, we've also got to publish our, uh, salaries, and, uh, I won't, I will add to, uh, the county judges throughout the state received a supplement increase this year, so I'm going to reject the county raise, the two percent raise. Uh, and that was, Angela read it off earlier, the three thousand dollars, that's fringes and what have you to go as part, as part of that supplement. So it has cost them the county three thousand and thirty-nine dollars already, and I'm gonna not, uh, don't want to burden the county any further on that. And is everybody here familiar with what the ATPA officer is? I know Alvin is. Okay. Any, no one had any questions about that? Okay. Just want to be sure that everybody's got all the information that they need. Uh, does anybody have anything for...
Uh, Judge, we're gonna have to have any public hearings other than the one before the Commissioners' Court, so that there's no special...
I don't think so because we don't have anything on the tax, the tax rate is, uh, equal to or less than the effective tax rate. So we don't have to have any of those.
Did, uh, did you put out to the public, or have we put out to the public our, uh, public hearings on our annex bill?
They're just public information meetings, and, uh, yes, and, uh, Laura submitted that to the, uh, newspapers. And, uh, we've also been talking to local citizens in the community trying to get the word out. We have one meeting this Tuesday... community, trying to get the word out. We have one meeting this Tuesday at five o'clock at the Sire Lake Community Center, and then we have one Thursday at five o'clock at the Salisbury Community Center, and then...
Anybody in the audience that wants to get that information out to the public, it would be very helpful to us to, uh, have public input on that.
And I know Sire Lake is going to do it today, but, uh, any of the cities that have electronic boards in front of their city's halls, if we could request them to, uh, put it on their marquee or whatever you call it, it'd be helpful.
Yes, sir. That'd be great. Do you know the director at the Silvy Chamber of Commerce? Maybe she could do that for us. You know her very well?
Are you on the tour?
She's published it. She's pretty, pretty regular.
Good.
She applauds the publicity it does need.
Okay. Right. We'd like to have as many people that, that are interested in coming and, and learning the, the information that we have about the annex. That'd be great. All right. If there's nothing further, we'll be in recess until one thirty, when we have a special meeting to handle one, one agenda item. All right? Make the motion, Judge.
I move with Judge.
Second.
All right, we stand, Judge. First and second.
Kim, we got thirty minutes for lunch, sir.
You're senior, baby.
We're with me first round.